Just one, one single speed.
Yeah, yeah, just one single, and it's basically all I need, going uphill, it's a challenge, oh well.
Oh, are you waiting for us? You're all staring at us.
Yeah.
Hey, what time is it really?
So it is this clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If everyone could join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna do roll call. Adams?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Bunce?
Here.
Bauman? Lagerway? Stoutenberg?
Here.
Kittler?
Yes, here.
Alright. So our first order of business is going to be to vote for officers. As you can imagine, it's been a bit since this commission has met. And this is a practice that we need to do yearly. So, just gonna give a brief background, at the last meeting, the Chair was Joe Bauman. The Vice Chair was Mr. Benson from Clam Lake, who is no longer a member. And Jerry Adams was Secretary. Mr. Bauman was unable to make this meeting. I did reach out to him about his interest in being Chair. He stated if the Commission wished that he be Chair, that he would be accepting of that role. However, it was not a, he must be the Chair. So at this time, if you guys wanna discuss possible nominees for all three positions, you certainly could do a roll call vote for, for each position, or if you wanted to do a slate of nominee for Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary as one motion.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, the Secretary, does the Secretary really take menaces? Is that the responsibility? Or is someone over there taking, taking?
I worked myself to the.
Yeah, right? So yes, it is, it is a serious position, as far as making sure that records are maintained. However, there is strong support from city staff in those record-keeping tasks.
Okay.
Raise your hand.
I mean, given the makeup of the Board, I mean, most of them are city folks. I'm fine with whoever this amongst you would like for a Chair, you know? Whether it's the persons that here that can't say no.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's always good.
And, and seeing as that it's not a very demanding job, and certainly up to it, Joe is a fine Chairman, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
I trust him.
Did you guys wanna do separate motions for each position, or did you wanna put a slate together and push it through that way?
Why don't, why don't we just make a lump?
Lump some, okay.
Acceptance and.
So then, the next position would be a Vice Chair. It looks like in the past, the Chair was a city-appointed member, and the Vice Chair was a Clam Lake-appointed member. However, there is no definition in bylaws that, that make has, has to be treated that way, moving forward. So it is up to the Commission on how they choose.
I'm already Chair for Clam, why don't you take the Vice Chair?
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, good, good.
As long as I'm not that Secretary.
Yeah.
I'm happy to accept the Secretary.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So I would need a motion from a Commission member to appoint Bauman as Chair, Kittler as Vice Chair, and Adams as Secretary. And then I would need someone to second that motion as well.
Well, I'm, I make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright. Stoutenberg?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bauman? Kittler?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Lagerway? Okay. So Steve, you certainly don't have to move positions, but typically the Chair, or whomever is running the meeting would sit in the middle. Do you wish to do that? I can move your name tag. Okay, alright.
Oh, I forgot, he wasn't, our Chair's not here. That's okay. Okay, so at this point.
Now you are running the meeting. Correct.
Okay, so our next item on the agenda is the April 2nd, 2020 meeting minutes.
We actually need to truly approve the agenda moving forward, so your first, yeah.
Okay, approval of agenda. Okay, and I can, I can ask for additions, deletions, anything like that, correct?
Yep, now would be the time.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda proposed? Okay, I hear none, or do you have some? Nope? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve agenda is presented.
Second?
Support.
Support. I'm guessing the roll call, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, staying? Okay, motion passes. Let's see, now we're onto the meeting minutes from April 2nd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, communication. So, I'm not sure what exactly that part is.
That's okay. Um, so while this Board is rather new to, to meeting, hasn't met in a while, Teresa Waldo is our new Community Development Director. This is week three, Teresa?
Yes.
Um, so we just wanted to do an introduction to the Board, so I'll let Teresa take over.
Yeah.
Yep, so Teresa Waldo, Community Development Director, also planning and zoning. I come from Manistee, where I was the Community Development Director for about twenty months. I live currently in White Cloud, and I'm gonna be moving up here. So my husband and I are gonna be putting the house up for sale, so that'll be exciting to move here. And like she said, it's week three. I've been drinking from the fire hose. It's been crazy, but I enjoy it. It's what I like to do, so thank you for letting me say hello.
And then, some members know me, but I'll do a brief introduction as well. My name's Danielle Timmer. I've been with the City for eight years, and the Community Development Department for almost three. And I will be the one that you probably see the most email communication from, as far as packets, attendance, all of that jazz. Don't hesitate to ask any questions for either one of us, here to help.
Yes.
Okay. So let's move on to public hearings. I'm not sure, I didn't see anything. Is that just, is that just standing? A standing appointment?
Right.
So there's nothing then?
Correct.
Okay. Onto new business, the Cadillac Junction update?
Yes. So we have Dee. I don't wanna butcher your title, so I'll let you do, do a brief introduction on your relationship to the property. But, the property owners reached out to us to kinda, just wanting to get the Commission back together and give some updates on maybe things that are happening with the property, or the direction in which they wish to head with the property. So, if you wanna go ahead and stand up at the podium, you're more than welcome to.
Okay.
Thank you, Danielle.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
For sure. And yeah, my name is Dee Brinks, and this is John Lee Coochie. And we've brought our, my husband Cody and Grandma Dee Coochie as well. And we're landowner, landowners and developers of the Cadillac Junction. And just thank you for assembling today and for your time, and we appreciate that, everybody. And we've been working a little bit with Nikki here too. And so, yeah, I'll just kinda jump in. I have a couple notes, and if we have questions, we can go from there. So, thanks again, we appreciate your time. Yeah, we're excited to continue and promote and enhance Cadillac, and we care, appreciate the Cadillac area, always have. And with over six hundred and fifty acres, we get to continue to do that for a while, so. Our Realtor, Rod Aldering, who is not able to be here today, he sent us with some updates that I'd like to just kinda read to you. He says, "Dear Joint Planning Commission, since we have been marketing the Cadillac Junction for over three years, please allow us to share a few thoughts and updates. Number one, we are encouraged that we have landed two tenants at the retail center. Number two, the J&amp;H Mobile gas station continues to be very busy, and with over a hundred and twenty locations, ours is one of their busiest stores in their chain. Number three, we can announce that we have the approximately 1.37 acre site at the corner of M-55 and Terry D Boulevard, just east of the J&amp;H, under contract to a national fast food restaurant chain. There have been delays due to the Wexford County not having legal documents available in an online format, but progress continues. Number four, the macroeconomy has changed significantly since Cadillac Junction received its final approval. Post-COVID, around 2020, most retailers have significantly either cut back or eliminated new store openings. Big box retailers are mostly sitting on the sidelines, with the exception of Costco. Mid-box retailers are also sidelined, with the exception of Ross Dress for Less stores. They take second or third generation boxes, not new construction, and Trader Joe's, for which Cadillac isn't a large enough market. Hotels, restaurants, et cetera, also cut back expansions significantly in that timeframe, with a few exceptions. There are a few factors driving the stagnation of retail. First, new building construction costs have increased dramatically over the past few years. This, coupled with high interest rates, have made it, made building new buildings impractical for most retailers, so they aren't in the market for vacant land. Combine these factors with the difficulty of finding employees and other geopolitical uncertainties, many are taking a wait-and-see kind of attitude. And then, like, number five, we have, like mentioned initially, we've been working with Nikki and the AES team, and there is an opportunity to market some of the southerly property for, like, light industrial. So, with that being said, we'll just keep pushing forward and promoting, driving forward, and, and moving. So thank you for your time, and thanks for gathering. So if you have any questions, we, we would be open to that, or just, yeah, thank you. Nikki, did you have anything to add, or?
So we do have an opportu, can I stand? Can I do this? Like, I never know the rules. So we are working with MEDC currently, we have an opportunity, like Dee said, to promote the part of the property as light industrial. So we just wanted to come before you guys, let you guys know that that is a possibility. There's nothing, it's a platform that we're entering data into right now, but we are kind of exploring that opportunity, so.
Now, Big B is out there too, isn't it?
Yeah, yep.
They're, they're the only other.
They are at the retail, that retail center mall, yep, so they're in one suite in that mall. And then there also is the North Arrow, and they are physical therapy for ABA autistic, or, yeah, children, and, yeah, yeah.
And originally, the, the client that was, that is going or is.
Is under contract.
That's under contract on the corner, across from the J&amp;H. For a while there, they were contracted to go into the portion, the northerly portion of that retail building. Then they decided not to do that, but to buy and purchase a lot and put a new building up instead. So, so that's kinda how that evolved.
Is there anything that we can help with, or to help move anything forward, or that you're looking for from the community or us as a word?
Yeah, no, thanks Marina, appreciate that. I, you know, we really wanted to just, for sure, you know, especially with the, the law under contract, we haven't needed to meet, but that could be something in the near future, so I guess we kinda wanted to get that ball rolling instead of scrambling when we needed some, when we needed to make a decision together. So, really, I think it's a great opening meeting, but I guess in general too, just, you know, being out, open and upfront that we might do some light industrial promoting, and maybe it's, maybe it is more manufacturing on the southerly end of, of it. So, and we don't know what that looks like, but we would wanna, we'd communicate that, and, and so I. Nikki, do you think we have any to-dos, or?
No, I would say, so last year was an opportunity for us to do a Developer Day, and so we were able to highlight their property to a handful of developers. We're gonna continue, they, they will be another, the site again this year for our Developer Day. So we're not yet, we're looking for any and every opportunity, housing.
Exactly.
Light industrial, anything that we can possibly get in to make that thriving, you know, property.
Steve, there was another group of property owners involved in the annexing, which was, Dave McCurdy was part of that.
Yeah, I don't know.
That doesn't, that connects to their property, doesn't it?
I don't, I don't know if you, if they have a relationship with that group.
You know who I'm talking about?
With the, who did you say, McCurdy?
Well, Dave McCurdy, the late Dave McCurdy was involved in an investment group that wanted to transfer into the cities.
That's the, the wooded place.
Yeah, I believe that land goes all the way over to Sealy Road, I think.
And I don't know if you are coordinating with them at all, or they're just waiting for a change, but right now, you're dealing with a property upfront.
We're dealing with a property upfront, but the property in the back, that is a, a large portion, like a 521 acre piece. That is what we are talking about as well.
All the way to the tracks?
All the way to the tracks.
And all the way to Sealy.
And you know what? I, I do have maps for you.
Oh, and it does go to Sealy?
It does, yeah.
There's an eighty acre parcel that goes to Sealy.
Yes, we're so formal.
I should've, I should've handed this out, thank you Jerry.
Yeah.
Yes.
I should've handed this out earlier too.
Oh, cool.
So you can kinda see.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, you can kinda see in the red and yellow is.
Thank you.
And it is under two different owners. The property that goes up to Sealy is, is owned by Dee, or Dee and Cody and my wife Karen and I.
In the red, yep.
That's the red piece.
Yep.
The yellow piece is the, is the Cadillac Junction piece that my mom owns.
Okay.
Yep.
I just had a thought, the city is, pretty soon, is gonna be entering, entering into a contract with a consultant to do a major update of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
And there will be, I believe, some opportunities to interact with that consultant. I really suggest, since you have such a large site, strategically located and so forth, it probably would behoove you, if you get the opportunity to, to touch base with the city staff, of course.
Yes.
And if you had the opportunity to get involved in any sort of interaction with a consultant, it probably would be beneficial to that person as well as, as you folks.
Exactly, and I think, yeah.
Because likely there will be additional design criteria and so forth, and this is, would be a good time for you to have some input into, into what's happening.
Yeah, absolutely, and I know we touched base on some of that too, when all the final paperwork was done with, with the attorneys and whatnot too. So we have some of that stuff out there, I believe.
Yeah, I believe there are some bounds on this, when it comes to land use and rezoning. I mean, the agreement, there's, and I have not looked at it in a long time.
I mean, it's just a short, like, three-page thing, right? Light reading material.
Our checkbook doesn't say that.
You have to take a hard look at it.
Same.
Yes.
No, we'd love that, that's great, thank you Jerry.
They're gonna get into design criteria, you know, landscaping, all kinds of things. It just would behoove you, again, you have such a large site.
Absolutely.
A big mixed-use development opportunity, and.
Sure is.
Yes.
Any developers have an interest in residential or apartment buildings, or anything in there?
We do have, we do have interest, ongoing communications. We don't have anything on paper right now, but there's a lot of, a lot of chatter. And even, yeah, on the residential end, for sure. And even, it's, even on the retail land, once in a while, here and there, so.
But we've been talking with some, some people that put in homes and things of that nature, so. And there seems to be positive traction on that. But there again, nothing's sold until you close, so.
Yes.
But we are working on that.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate, we appreciate your time.
Laura, do you have anything to maybe clarify on what a process might look like if the property owner was to maybe request a rezoning of, of part of that property? Or even maybe taking it a step further, if it wasn't the property owner requesting, but like, what the zoning ordinance rewrite would look like, should that interest be?
So, I, I'm actually, right now, trying to pull up that document that you're talking about, so I can look at it, I'm so sorry. If you give me, like, three minutes, I can probably give you a more intelligent answer.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
It's hidden here for Mike, and I, I know we spent a lot of time on it when we drafted it, and I just don't wanna misquote it.
Yeah, and I do remember looking at a map that was in the, the agreement. I do remember seeing, like, commercial and residential. Unsure on the true word industrial or light industrial use, but Laura's gonna look that up for us and see what, what that process might look like.
Right, obviously unique, and that's why we have a joint planning.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, anything further on this topic?
She's gonna look it up for us real quick and kinda give us a step, yeah.
I'm not used to videos.
No, you're good. And I guess I should've introduced Laura as well. Laura is an attorney from Foster Swift. Mike Comer is also, but he had a meeting before this, and it ran a little late.
And it ran late, so Mike and I both, I should say, our firm has represented the City since early 2010 or late 2009, and I've been involved from the start, and Mike and I worked quite a lot on this, what was litigation, and then ultimately a consent judgment. But obviously, that was a few years ago, so I just wanna pull it up here and see which document it's in. I'm not sure if it's in the consent judgment. I know lawyers write a lot of papers, that's really.
Just light reading material.
Yeah, this is all the releases. Oh, I gotta look at the development agreement. I apologize.
No, I apologize, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I just thought it might be beneficial for the.
Yeah. Find the right document here. Alright, I'm in the 425. Development. Zoning, alright, we established the Joint Planning Commission, yes. So some of this might be stating the obvious, the Joint Planning Commission has authority over all of the land use and zoning approvals for the area that is subject to this, including land divisions, condominium developments, subdivision plating, planning, and zoning, the same as the City Planning Commission would have for other city property. And then, development. So, okay, then it has to, all development has to comply with the development agreement. Sorry, this is a hundred and fourteen page document, I won't read them all out loud.
Yeah.
Development agreement. Recorded first amended Cadillac Junction development agreement, is what we're looking for. Alright, so at least, assuming this is the most recent one, which this was recorded in 2019, so I think it is. The use of the property shall comply with the regulations for the MPUD zoning district, the MPUD ordinance, except as otherwise provided in this development agreement. Prior to any development for a particular site, developer must receive final site plan approval from the City.
So that's for the.
Really, what does, I mean, really, and maybe, and maybe making this more complicated than I need to. This agreement is going to take, take precedence, right, over anything different in the regular zoning ordinance. So, if the zoning ordinance says something that's inconsistent with this agreement, I think likely if this agreement is more strict or more stringent, then this agreement is going to control. But there's, I mean, it's a lengthy, the development agreement itself is pretty lengthy. I mean, it talks about parking, lighting, storm runoff, sewer and water, rights of way, traffic studies, sidewalks, so there's a lot to it. So that's what'll be the guiding document primarily, when there are specific uses that need approval. I'm not sure if that's helpful right now.
Clear as mud.
Well, yeah, quite a bit. I mean, there's, I recall there being a map in there, that kind of laid out different land uses.
Yeah.
Which would probably help. I'll try to dig mine up.
Yeah, I do, I remember the map that you're speaking of, and I just don't remember there being that true industrial verbiage on there. Not that in the agreement, it doesn't link to that, but I was just wondering if that was the direction that the property owner was kind of wishing to head, what that process looks like as far.
You mean it was changing from what was in the agreement?
Right, so she had mentioned maybe light industrial use for some of the property.
That would probably take the, that would take the approval of the City Council, which is already known. But then it's, it would be Clam Lake Township Board would have to approve. And it may involve an amendment to the agreement. Cause if it's different than it stated.
Right, and that's what I.
Yes, is that, that's what would be required.
That was what my assumption was, but I was just wondering, like, from legal standpoint. Laura, are you shaking your head in agreement of that's probably the case, or?
I mean, I, I will not sit here and give a legal opinion on whether a particular development is or is not permitted under that agreement. I mean, I, I will not sit here and give a legal opinion on whether a particular development is or is not permitted under that agreement, but I will nod my head to say if both the city, uh, in Clam Lake and the developer wanted to change the agreement, all of the original parties to an agreement can always change an agreement.
Sorry, questioning if it was already approved for light industrial?
There were, there were some commercial, I thought there was light industrial approved closer to the highway.
Okay.
And then as you move towards Sealy, it transitions to, um, multifamily residential and then single family.
Yeah, that section that comes.
I mean, that's what I remember.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think, yeah, if there's specific land uses or, um, things we want to look at, and again, I apologize that I'm sort of pitch hitting for Mike here, and he might have a better answer, but, um, our first stop is going to be the development agreement.
And that would just take, like, the, the property owner maybe submitting a request for us to look into X, and we could.
Yeah, we can certainly look at anything. And Danielle, I'll send you, um, what I'm looking at, just so you have it handy.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, are we, I think we're done with that topic? Okay, yeah, okay, let's move on to, um, the, our proposed meeting dates, it's in the packet. Is it the last page?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so you guys all have a copy of the bylaws, um, I do plan on emailing them to you guys as well. Um, we are required to, to meet four times a year, so I thought just establishing a quarterly meeting schedule, um, would be a good place to start. Um, if, if there's need to, to meet in between, um, those dates, we could always call a special meeting like we did today. Um, but I just wanted to get your guys' opinion on possibly having our quarterly meetings take place on the second Tuesday of every month, um, and then on a timeframe, is the six o'clock timeframe work well for you? Um, would you rather it be a five thirty, five o'clock kind of timeframe, open to suggestions?
I'm retired, so, I don't, I don't know.
I have a flexible job, so, I have kids, first of all, it's, but.
Yeah, and I did look back at the other, um, two meetings, and those took place at six o- at the six o'clock timeframe. Um, our regular planning commission meets at six o'clock, but obviously, um, you guys have the authority to, to rule differently.
Five, six, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Doesn't matter to me.
Or I office.
Six o'clock, okay then?
Yeah.
Okay, I want one later, that's for sure, but, so, so we're looking at these days at six P M. Uh, that's proposed, does anybody have a problem with these dates?
No, I.
My birthday is the fourteenth, so I expect cupcakes. Yeah, there we are, okay, make a note, make a note.
Okay.
Okay with me.
Would it be okay if we did five o'clock?
Okay, well, let's talk about that again, again, I'm retired, so I'm okay with five. Um, is anybody got a, a cause of buying, how about you, Dave?
No, I'm fine.
No, evening's an evening, like, I love daytime, but I know most people don't love that, so.
Okay.
Five or six doesn't make a difference.
Okay, so we're okay with five then, it seems to be better over there, and, and that's a part of the thing, okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so now we're looking at five for those dates.
Yeah.
Any, any concerns or comments on that at this point? Okay, so I need a motion to approve these meeting dates at five, where, where they started at five P M.
Motion to approve these meeting dates in our packet, starting at five P M. And just for clarification, um, Miranda, you are motioning the second Tuesday quarterly.
Yes ma'am.
At five P M.
Yes.
Is there a support?
I support.
Okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
That was good.
You can't go back to work now, Steve.
I can, don't worry.
Yeah.
So.
For what it's worth, yeah.
We don't seem to have any old business, um, board member comments, anyone have, uh, any, any comments?
All's well.
Okay, no, uh, board member, uh, any members of the public would like to make comment at our meeting? Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any willingness there. Uh, no other business on the agenda, so, um, I need a motion to adjourn.
Done them all, motion to adjourn.
Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Good job.
Thank you Laura.